Let's bring this Thursday, April 11, 2024, meeting of the Cedar Springs City Council to order. And let's rise and recite the pledge, please.
I am the United States of America. In the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would like to take a moment of silence to honor Mr. Gerald Hall. Please take a moment to reflect and remember him and his many contributions to his community. Thank you. Now I will call the roll call. Mrs. Conley is absent today.
Mr. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Marl.
Here.
Mrs. Powell.
Here.
Mrs. Race.
Here.
Miss.
Mrs. Winters?
Here.
Miss? Are you Miss or Misses, by the way? Miss. Just want to make sure. And Ms. Atchison is here. Now, I will entertain a motion to excuse the absent member. There has been a... Is anybody want to make that motion? There's a motion and a second. Do we need to discuss it? I don't think so. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pass six zero. Public comments. The council welcomes and encourages the public to speak during the public comment and public hearing portions of the agenda. However, council policy is to hear the public comment, not to act on the public comment at this time. Concerns brought before the council during the public comment portion of the agenda will be referred to the city manager for action. If after communicating with the city manager, no resolution is reached, the concern will be elevated to the mayor and then eventually to the council for action. Those citizens wishing to speak on agenda and non-agenda items will be allowed a maximum of four minutes each to address their concerns. This is the only time during the council meeting that citizens are allowed to address the council. Please state your name and address for the record if you would like... If you want us to reply by email, you probably would want to do that, too. Are there any members of the public that would like to make a public comment?
Hi, I'm Eric Morales, Public Information Officer with the SBA, a small business administration but the Office of Disaster Assistance. So I'm from Puerto Rico, but we work in almost every state. I have been working lately in the states of the north. So specifically, I'm here because it's related about the topic, the disaster that happened on August 24 to 26 on the last year. So that we are still here. We are still doing outreach. We are still doing meetings, interviews. Because the deadline supply with the SBA, also with FEMA, it was extended until May 8. So that's why we are still here. So that deadline is for the physical damages. That means for infrastructure, real estate inventory equipment, for homeowners, renters, nonprofits, and businesses. So, but also we have another deadline, the economic damages deadline, that's for December. Because we always give more time for those type of damages. Because that's only for businesses and nonprofits. It's not that easy to see that you have economic damages because of a disaster. So we are visiting Kent County, it's a primary county, so you can see physical damages here. But we are visiting all the cities and townships in Kent County. Because you can have here constituents with damages, our families here with other people in other cities, towns, or counties with damages. So you all can help us sharing information to keep informing the citizens so we can still help them. The people is taking advantage of these funds. We are an alternative to FEMA. We are a more affordable way than to recover than the banks. I have more flyers than these ones. The... One of the most important documents here is the fact sheet. So that's this document. That's where you can see all the details about this presidential declaration, the deadlines, the incident period, the places that are declared. All the details are here. Very important document. Also, I brought the document for the locations of the centers, DRCs and BRCs. That means disaster recovery centers and business recovery centers. The DRCs are from FEMA, but we were there, too. So if a person visit a DRC, they can apply for FEMA and SBA the same day on the same building, no duplication of benefits. Also, we have the BRCs, Business Recovery Center. So if a person go there, they can apply only with the SBA. So that's more for the businesses. But I want to explain again that we are the Office of Disaster Assistance. And we not only assist businesses, we also assist homeowners, renters, and nonprofits. And of course, sometimes the people get discouraged with us because we are not grants. But we... The people, the constituents, they are taking advantage of these funds different ways. For example, when... This is only for homeowners and renters, this example. When they are denied by FEMA, most of the times, they refer those survivors, the people that is affected, to SBA. But the citizens, they need to comprehend that they need to complete the procedures with the SBA. Because if they are denied by SBA, SBA might refer them back to FEMA. And FEMA might give them other disaster assistance, like grants. So at least they can have hope to receive something. Of course, they are not obligated to give more funds, but at least they can have hope. I want to explain something there. Hey, it's not only some people, it's like only applying with the SBA because they think that SBA gonna refer them back to FEMA when they were denied first by FEMA. But no, completing the procedures means that you have to provide all the documents, complete everything, comply with everything. And then if you are denied, they might refer you back. It's not like just by applying, SBA is going to refer you back to FEMA. So, okay. I have other flyer that is the SBDC, our resource partner, a small business development center. So they work for the state and they work for SBA. They are very good resource, very important for the citizens. Because here is the link, they can find grants, they have been advisors, they know about marketing, business plans, they know about all these disaster programs. So they are very, very valuable for the citizens. And we have also programs and different organizations for tenants, women. So that's the flyer here. Very, very good and valuable information there. So on the last documents on the package, there you can see some of the benefits about our programs, the documents that the people need to bring to apply with us. Also, the website, the customer service number, the 100 number. So they can answer all the questions there, they can give the status of the applications. So all this information is very good and very valuable. I'll explain how the citizens are taking advantage of this. For example, because we have the one-year deferment with zero percentage rates, so that can give the citizens time to get back in their feet quicker and faster instead of just waiting for other kind of resources. Or for example, with insurance companies, that takes time to do the settlement or for the payment. They can rebuild quicker with us. They might get the money faster with the SBA so that they can get back in their feet quicker. And we have... The people can choose also between seven and 30 years. And some people, I have seen payments of 20 something dollar a month or less than that. So they can have low monthly payment and the interest rate are fixed. All this, what's behind of all this? This is for the people with... That they need more assistance, like with lack of resources. So this is for that kind of citizens. That's why we have in the fact sheet, different kind of interest rates. The people that have a good credit score, they might have higher interest rates. Because it doesn't make sense backwards. But that's because this is for the people with... That need more help, not for people that have good credit score, that they can go and apply with the normal financial institutions. So that's why all these... This is for that kind of people primarily. But that doesn't mean that the people with good credit score can apply with us and can have better benefits with us than with the normal financial institutions. To summarize, in short, we are an alternative, not for everyone. But for some citizens, we are the only option and best option. And one last thing, all this information is not only important for these past events, but for possible future events. Because the procedures are going to be the same. All this information for possible future events that we hope are not, is gonna stay the same. Of course, why is it going to change the deadlines, location of the centers, the places that are declared? But for possible future events, if you already have all this information, you are gonna be more prepared and that's in on the benefit of the citizens. And please, if you can share that with the emergency management director of the city here. Of course, we already met with the emergency management director of the county. But of course, the better outreach, the more people that... From the staff of the government, we want to reach everyone. Because sometimes the citizens, they think that all the government, local government, county government, state government, federal government, they need to know everything. And if they know one of you, they think that you all should know everything about... Oh, and that's not the reality. It's like... But of course, that's why we come here. So you all can help us sharing information through website, social media, all that kind of resources. Thank you so much for your time and opportunity. Okay, no problem.
Yo.
Any other public comments? Anybody online?
I almost see staff online.
Hey, we'll close the public comments in, and we do not have any public hearings. Look, did you guys see any... Want to add anything to the agenda or make any corrections that you saw? Or anything that we need to add? Everybody was okay with the agenda? Okay, I'll make it... I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the agenda as it is. As presented.
Yes.
Yes, making a motion to adopt the agenda as it is presented.
Okay, Mr. Gross.
Yes.
Mr. Marvel.
Yes.
Mrs. Powell.
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Winters. Ms. Atchison votes yes. Six zero. All right, how about the consent agenda? Is there anything on there that we need to change? No?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Second thought.
All right, Mr. Gross.
Yes.
Mr. Marvel.
Yes.
Mrs. Powell.
Yes.
Mrs. Ray.
Yes.
Mrs. Winters.
Yeah.
Ms. Atchison votes yes. All right, we're on to action items. Action item seven, a motion to approve ordinance 250 and ordinance to amend Article seven, signs of chapter 32 zoning of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cedar Springs. Sign ordinance, second reading.
I'll make the motion to approve the ordinance 250 and ordinance to amend the articles of... I believe that's Article V11, is that a seven? Signs of chapter 32 zoning of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cedar Springs. Sign ordinance, second reading.
I'll second that.
Discussion? Add? So seeing no discussion, let's make a vote. Angela Winters. Mrs. Ray, sorry.
Yes.
Mrs. Powell.
Yeah.
Mr. Marvel.
Yes.
Mr. Gross.
Yes.
Ms. Atchison. Yes. Okay. Motion on action, action item B, 7B. Motion to approve the Cedar Blitz Gravel Bike Race Community Event, July 13, 2024, pending city manager's approval of street closures, second review.
I'd like to make a motion to... To approve the Cedar Blitz Gravel Bike Race Community Event, July 13, 2024, pending city manager's approval of street closures, second review. Seconded.
Would you like to start the discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, so I did email Mr. Marty Marzinski, the event organizer, after the last council meeting. Told him it went to council first reading. He still... We still don't have a final decision on whether the gas station is going to cooperate in being closed on this morning or not. So that's, I mean, I think maybe that's something I can work with him on. It's... We're either gonna close Main Street from Muskegon to Maple or Beach to Maple. So I'll work out those details with Marty. The only other thing that we had asked him, based on his community event application, he was proposing all of the Portageons be right in front of... On Maple Street by the amphitheater. We asked maybe if he could put some there and maybe put some over on Second Street, where we're gonna do that parking lot, to kind of not have a whole row of, you know, restrooms right there. Because they do use that area for different vendors and stuff. He said, "No problem." So that was the only two requests that we had.
What are the chances of that, of the gas station actually wanting to be closed?
That's up to the event, to work with the business, to figure that out. What do you think?
I think it'd be real hard for a business to close for how many hours? Six?
Roughly six, yeah. The gas station, I mean...
Right, and you know, they do scratch offs and... I wish there was an alternative.
Well, if, I mean, if they're like an absolute no, you know, we're gonna be open, then we will... The racers will come down Muskegon, turn on First, and turn on Beach, and then come out to Main and finish on Main Street.
We shall see.
He has enough capacity to take care of the differences, but go ahead, Jerry, what was your?
I agree that... Fully have the belief that you could take care of it. The one question I do have, what is the longest race they have? Which was 100 and whatever miles? I am considering the fact that it would take me forever to do that. Is Main Street going to be closed for the entirety of that race? Because that was obviously gonna take longer. Are they still figuring on finishing it?
It's 50 in the blue.
Okay, because I would hate to see it as long as that one's gonna take to finish up. If they're still finishing up or attempting to finish up at the same location.
Tear down and opening the road by 3:00 PM.
We're looking, what was it, 6:00 AM to 5:00 AM? I know we've had a lot of visitors to the area, those that pass through and so forth, have been upset at times of the amount of times we have Main Street closed. There's some of those that won't be interested in the bike race at all. They'll be concerned about not being able to travel through town again, so... That's my whole... That was my whole question for, so...
We've had so many constructions, everyone should know the bypass.
Most county, the digital ones to have like the week ahead and on both ends of town, so...
Digital sign again?
That's the whole thing.
And then the digital sign also does some advertising, so... It's a good thing.
That is just amazing. They're going all the way to Coral? Wow. It's huge.
Mr. Marvel, you have anything?
Uh no.
Mrs. Winters? Mrs. Ray?
No.
Okay. Let's call the vote, then. Mr. Gross.
Yes.
Mrs. Powell.
Yes.
Mrs. Winters. Mr. Marvel.
Yes.
Mrs. Ray.
Yeah.
Ms. Atchison votes yes. Moving on to action item seven C, motion to uphold or reverse the Disclosure Denial for Freedom of Information Act, requested dated November 3, 2023, received on March 11, 2024, requested by Mr. Donald Kindred. Need some information?
I would like to have you address it again, please, okay?
So this gentleman submitted a FOIA for some information. We looked through our records, we do not have any information. It was regarding a police officer that worked here years ago. In 2014, when we no longer had a police department, our records were sent to the Kent County Sheriff's Department. So we physically do not have any of these records in our possession. We replied, like, you know, if we had the information, we would have supplied it. But we said, "We don't have the information, sorry, we can't give you documents that we don't have." That didn't satisfy him, I guess. So he appealed that. Well, we can't produce documents we don't have. We sent... We directed them to contact the Kent County Sheriff's Department. Do we know if he did that or not? We don't know.
He did subsequently send an additional FOIA, which I then had to deny, that requested the same records, just he changed the name on there, so... So...
Interesting.
If we vote to uphold, we would be making you send records you don't have.
No.
We would be...
Upholding the denial.
Upholding the denial. So the reverse would be?
That we have the record somewhere and that we need to provide them.
Okay, that's why that's...
So we want the uphold.
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
Good to know, okay.
Okay.
To get the records and how to do that?
Well, I would make a motion to uphold the Disclosure Denial for the Freedom of Information Act request dated November 3, 2023, received on March 11, 2024, requested by Mr. Donald Kindred.
I'll second that.
Do we have any other discussion? Mr. Gross.
No.
Mr. Marvel.
No.
Mrs. Powell.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, I'm sorry. I was asking if there was any other... Sorry. I'm voting yes on the resolution.
Just to be clear, we're voting yes on this to uphold it.
Yes.
Okay, all right, not reverse it.
Right.
I just want to make sure this is clear, yeah.
Yes.
If there's any other questions, so...
Any questions?
No.
Okay.
Now it's yes. To the vote on it, all right.
Let's start, let's vote again.
Oh, boy.
Mr. Gross.
Yes.
Mr. Marvel.
Yes.
Mrs. Powell.
Yeah.
Mrs. Ray.
Yes.
Mrs. Winters.
Yeah.
Ms. Atchison votes yes. Moving on to discussion. It's a draft budget. Ms. Landon, would you like to begin the discussion?
We have not had any changes to the draft budget since the workshop. So we didn't... Sorry. So we didn't include that whole packet that you got last time, just because there's no changes, no need to. We still do not have the library, even a draft of their budget yet. They were gonna bring it to their board meeting at the end of this month. So we will have it for May for the adoption of the budget. But we don't have anything to share at this point. I think they were also waiting for their new library director to start, which he starts next week. So we should have more on that soon. And in the packet, you have just the overview of the budget, which was part of the packet, but that just gives you a good summary of where we ended up budget-wise on all the funds. So shows, you know, if we're gonna be taking anything from the fund balance based on the proposed revenues and expenses for each and total, you know, where all the funds total up to. So I guess with that, Darla, did you have anything you want to add? Anybody?
Yeah, do we have any question? With no additional discussion, we will move on to communications. Or clarification needed on any communications we've received?
Through a few of the communication pieces. A lot of community events coming in. These are routine events. Staff has reviewed them, I've reviewed them. I don't see any issues, so I've signed them and let the chamber know they're good to go on them. Letter H, Cedar Springs Public Library Lease with map. This was brought up at the budget workshop. Mr. Gross had asked what the map of the lease was for the library. It is the whole area. We... Couple years ago, we did present a possible reduction of that footprint, but it never went through. The library board didn't approve it, so it never came back to the city. But I was thinking with the trust fund grant that we have been awarded, but we don't have the money yet. Once you accept trust fund money, the footprint of where that money is spent, like there's restrictions on that. So... Time that we met with the library board and reduce that footprint because there's gonna be, you know, changes going in over by the amphitheater with the playground and the restroom going in there. We could propose it to the library. I know they were thinking of proposing something to us, too, to reduce that footprint that they're responsible for, so...
The reason I asked the question to begin with is because it caught me off guard when I was asked that.
Because it did.
In their belief, they had control of all of the properties there. And I said, "Well, it's been a public park forever." The old city hall used to be down there. How could we just hand over control of the entirety of the property to a volunteer group? And that's where I was coming from with that. It just amazed me that it was even considered to be that way. The other part was wanting to know if they had control of the amphitheater. You know, and I just, I just didn't see that happening, so... Would we be having to ask them questions if we're going to improve the park? If they have a lease on it? And that was... Really caught me off guard, so...
Maybe we should dig that back up and change that footprint before we get into the trust fund grant.
I remember that discussion we had about reducing that footprint and how we gave the library certain uses of the property and the amphitheater without charge, I believe. They had to schedule it. And somehow, it was just an unforeseen circumstance that it got included in the contract. And Mr. Howell noticed that and said, "The library really shouldn't be in control of all that property, it's a city property." So it's a work in progress. I can't imagine why the library at that time would have refused to approve that, but stranger things have happened.
Yeah, can work with their board chair and get something on their agenda and present a revised map to them that just has the footprint of the library building.
I think it'll pass easy. I don't see any reason it wouldn't. But Solon would have to approve, Solon, part of the board would have to approve it for sure because the contract will have to be changed in that respect.
Is it just part of the lease or is it part of the contract?
Guess, yeah. I'm not sure at this point. Seems like it was part of the contract, but it'll work out, I'm sure.
All of this to the library board, not to Solon Township?
But the board together would have to approve it, mhm. Well, it'll work out. I'm not even worried about it, as long as we... I don't think they want to be responsible for all that property.
And then the maintenance of it should fall upon them also.
All right. They don't.
I'm not against it. Situation, but if not, I just don't think it's feasible.
That's not what our library is for, mulhorns and stuff.
Next, I just wanted to point out the Adventure Begins at Your Library, the summer reading program. They're starting to solicit donations for that and putting out information on that excellent program every year. I think they do a fabulous job with the summer reading program. And then next, I wanted to talk about nine K water and sewer rate comparison. So another discussion that came from the budget workshop, I know this is twenty twenty-one. We've contacted the company that normally updates this for us, but that staff person has left and that community can no longer take on. It's quite a task to update something like this, but I, I mean, it's, it's good information, though, if you can see where the city is and then look at, hopefully, other communities our size have a similar water and sewer system that we have. And you can see their, their total rate compared to ours. Just thought it was good information.
Absolutely, especially when we're the ones getting questions and complaints. Why do we have the most expensive water in Michigan? Well, we don't.
That, was that good information for you? Yeah, perfect, good. That was all I wanted to point out. Any other questions on anything?
I'm very happy to see the community events coming in early. And it's something we, it was a goal for a long time, to be able to plan ahead and especially for people who might need electricity and water and police protection. It's just coming around the way we hoped it would.
The chamber wants to put out a calendar of events, you know, for many months all at once instead of one every month or whatever, so, yeah. Going on.
Wonderful.
Can we get anything else? Ms. Johnson? For communications?
Moving on to department reports.
Things that I wanted to highlight. We do have a current full-time position posting going on right now. We had one of our DPW employees resign the end of March, so we're trying to get that position filled. Summer hits us too hard and we're, we fall behind, but some applications are coming in, so that's good. Seventeen North Main Street Pocket Park, bids were due on that project April second. Only two bids were received, one from a landscape company and one from an electrical company. So we rejected both bids and put it back out to bid. New bids are now due April twenty-sixth. It is going to put the project back a little bit. I, I wanted the project to start on or around May first. Once they start, they've got a hundred and twenty days to complete it. Spring break, I think, got in the way for several contractors to get, put bids together and get bids from subcontractors to put a whole package together, so. We really need a general contractor to, to see this project from beginning to end, just by all the different pieces that it has in it. So hopefully, we'll get some bids April twenty-sixth, and then we'll bring that back to, to the May council meeting for a, a decision for a contractor. And then we changed in the specs to be completed by September thirtieth. I'd like it to be open by red flannel, but substantially completed by September thirtieth. So that should be good. Dean Excavating is working daily on extending the water line at the end of Ash Street through the property that they're going to develop to get our new well number six online. That's going to be a couple-month project, hoping to have that online late summer, early fall. And well, number three that we took out of production a couple of weeks ago. Monday, that, that whole well was filled in with hole fill or something like that. So it's, there's nothing coming out of that pipe anymore, so that one is all gone. In two weeks, I'm going to attend the Cedar Springs Public School Job Fair and just be there as a local employer. If students want to sign up to do mock interviews, I'll, I'd be willing to do that, so. And it's good for the seniors to get some exposure, you know, interviews and just communication with area businesses. So I'll be part of that. And then next Thursday night, April eighteenth, we'll have a booth at Community Night. So hope everybody comes out and attends that. It's it's really good attendance. So pray for good weather next Thursday night.
Sure. Well, number four, I think nineteen sixty-four. Do we have plans to, you know, prepare for a rainy day on that?
Be up to Tanya. She has some information for you. When it gets to her turn, she's going to talk about the length of wells and how long they last and estimated life, so.
And that would be now, Department of Public Works.
I, I didn't hear what he said. I have a really hard time hearing you.
Sorry. Well, number four was, I think it was nineteen sixty-four is when it was drilled. Do we have like a plan in place for replacing a sixty-year-old well, you know, and?
Not yet. We're working on number six. So no, as of right now, we do not have a plan in place.
If it's still producing sufficient water.
Right.
There's no sense to take it offline.
What's the life expectancy of most of these wells?
Normally, they, when they build them, they'll tell you they'll last at least fifty years. But we'll get more than that out of it, just so long we keep the maintenance up on it.
Thank you.
So while three was guaranteed for fifty years and that ran for seventy-eight years. We have well six going in. They poured the footings for that one yesterday. So that's finally on the road to being put up. That'll be nice. That one should produce, what did I get on that one? About nine hundred and eighty gallons per minute. We can get a thousand out of it for sure, but Eagle will only give us a permit for six fifty a minute due to being out of the same aquifer as other, how do they put it? As other like farmers and stuff pulling out of the same aquifer, we can only be permitted for so many gallons per minute out of that. Then we have, like Darla had said, well, three, they came in and put a whole plug in that, so that's plugged no longer being used at all, which it hasn't been used since the eleventh of last month, when we got our sample result back and pulled it offline. Other than that, we're working on spring cleanup right now. We're out in the cemetery getting that started. And the parks, we started today getting the lines fixed that didn't get winterized correctly last winter. So we can get the water turned back on in the restrooms there. Hopefully, that's done by tomorrow. And then I don't really have a whole lot.
Very good.
There any questions? What's that? That's all I have.
Last couple of weeks, so I really don't have much. I will be attending the Community Night with Darla. And and Ms. Renee Race.
And Ms. Angela. Chief Detlaw, our department.
Well, I submitted a report, so it's been pretty much a normal month. Hasn't really been anything outrageously crazy going with calls, things along those lines. We just finished up most of our maintenance cycles on most of the trucks. So only have one more maintenance cycle to go, and that's just hose testing. So we'll see where we're at on that, going through that. We did hire two new firefighters. Finally starting to make some headway on there, Naden Krupp and Andrew Seward. So we're going to start that process of getting them trained and start getting them in the community and going from there. They're going to be paid on call and going through that, so. And that's really about it for the moment. I know there's some stuff going on with the roof that's developing. We'll kind of let that kind of see where it goes. And that's where it is. If anybody else has any questions?
Do you have to live in a certain area to be?
We like you to live within our response area. We have a few that have moved out, like, maybe within like a mile or two. But it all depends on where you're at and how to get there. They definitely local.
Glee then too. Very good. Awesome.
Of them are right in town. And out of the city limits.
Awesome. Thank you.
One question. Are you available during the day?
Possibly. Both of them have day jobs, but they get out early. So, you know, as they get to that point, so most of them, I think, Naden actually works until three. So kind of getting to that point.
Still find that to be one of the most difficult times to fill is daytime positions.
Mornings are really hard. That four thirty, five thirty to six is when everybody's actually going into work. So it's kind of hard to get a response there. Hiring Greg has helped immensely with our days. I try not to let him go by himself on any call. So, but can't always get it there because it depends on whether or not we have anybody else for coverage, but we're, we're gaining. We're definitely gaining.
Nothing new. I mean, it's just been the same. It's, it's not the same departments it used to be where the shops would leave their shops, lock up the door and go fight a fire and come back. So it's just not, it's not the way it used to be, so.
Because a lot of them don't work in town in Cedar. They work in Grand Rapids or they work in West Michigan as they go through, so. But actually, we're finding most of our biggest struggles start being at night now. So the night calls at two, three in the morning tend to draw the same four or five people, so.
At our planning commission meeting or with Solon, we had that joint any commission meeting, we had quite a discussion about, oh, they knew all these in that corner, Edgerton and seventeen. Who's, who, there was an accident out there today, and is that Solon territory or ours?
Solon's territory, they go through, but we have mutual aid agreements in most cases, like accidents or things I'm made sure of, like a code one or anything like that, or class one, sorry. We get called automatically through those, so.
Our trucks went out there, so I, I thought that was the situation.
Have mutually agreements with most of our departments in the area, so Sand Lake, Portland, Oklahoma, Spencer.
I had a discussion about about that traffic out there. There were, it's apparently an M dot decision. And there were a few ideas, but it's up to M dot to decide what to do.
I wish I could comment, so all I can tell you is the statistics.
That's what, that's what moves it, statistics.
Have to happen before anything else happens. It's sad.
Like they talked about the idea of having those, you know, like those, yeah, Michigan turnaround out there to some degree, if somebody designed that, because it's, it's, it's a mess. Well, thank God for St. Paul's. I can go down there and get turned around and come back.
Deputy Clerk.
I'm okay. There it goes. So April, the deputy clerk did graduate from Clerks Institute just a couple of weeks ago. That's a three-year program. So both her and I have gone through that, so just wanted to wish her congratulations. It's a lot of hard work and dedication to get through that program. It takes a lot of time away from your family and it's a great program for the clerks in the area. I wanted just to give a brief update on the election, since we're still wrapping that up. We did not get selected for an audit for this election, so we'll go into then retaining those records and whatnot. Beyond that, it's been a pretty busy month in my office with special meetings and notices and FOIAs. And then at the end of this month, April twenty-third, four P M, affidavits and nominating petitions are due for the two city council seats that will be up on, for election. One person has pulled out petitions for that, and then, yeah, that's about it from my office. Questions?
When are they due again?
April twenty-third, four P M.
All right, Finance Director.
Yes, so we already talked about the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year budget, so should be good on that for now. You'll see that next month for your final approval so that we can adopt that. Working now on some twenty-three, twenty-four budget amendments, so those will also probably come through next month just to prepare for year end, make sure we're in a good spot and within budget for all the expenses. So you'll see that coming through. Just, just kind of working on some spring cleaning in between tax season, so preparing for twenty twenty-four tax season. And in a couple of weeks, I will be starting my first year at Basic Institute for Treasurers through the Michigan Municipal Treasurers Association. So I'm excited to start that, and that'll be a three-year process as well, so year one, here I come.
Offer any scholarship or expense for your classes? Does the city do that? Do we do?
City?
Excellent. That's why we have such wonderful staff.
Smart. Yes, then we're moving on to council comments. Mr. Gross.
Jordan Sweet. This is the way they should run. Everything that everybody is a, as far as staff here at the office runs things and fire department, police and everything, it's just I like things because things are going smooth there, so, okay? That's it.
Mrs. Winters.
Being my second meeting, I'm, I'm learning, but yes, I thank you all for being very informative and very helpful.
Mr. Marvel.
Well, first, I owe the council an apology from the last meeting about making a false comment about the sewer and water rates. And whoever, whoever put that paper together, that was spot on, so. I mean, I, I tell the kids I work with all the time, and I tell the people I work with all the time, if you make a mistake, going up to it and, you know, integrity, 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 so. I apologize. I shouldn't be making false comments. So, yeah, I'll do my research a little bit better next time. You know, I, I actually called around to a whole bunch of people that one, a couple of people in Rockford, I called some people in Kent City and Sparta, got their water rates. And then you, you guys just did it all for me, so. I actually printed that paper off, and anytime somebody asks me about that now, I'll just hand that to them, so.
There you go.
Yeah. So thank you, guys, and, yeah. Just love being here, so.
Mrs. Powell.
Brandon, you wouldn't be the first person up here to have made a mistake. But I appreciate your comments, but that's, that's why we, I think, all respect and enjoy each other's company in that respect. Ms. Jerry, I miss Jerry so much.
Mrs. Ray.
I don't even, it's been a long day, so I'm just very happy that we have a couple of new firefighters. That's awesome. No one wants to walk into that, so that's exciting. I, I, I was sick, I think, last month, so I really haven't, but I've I really don't have much to say. Oh, welcome, because I missed the first, your first meeting, so I'm very excited. This is fun. It's good. I thought it'd be just like a two-year commitment, and I think it's like six or something now, which is small. It's not a big, I mean, we have people that are here. I've been here a long time, but it just takes time. They ask questions, call us, we're always there, so. And good luck with your school. And uh, good luck with your schooling, good for you. And congratulations to April. That's exciting news too, so that's all I got.
Um, I just want to say, we have two seats available, are up for election um, coming up, and it looks like we only have one person right now running, so. Um, Ms. Powell's retiring for sure now, I guess.
Jerry's kind of
with our begging. He doesn't want to put up with it anymore. So he's running now, but he wants somebody to run with him or against him. So um, I'm saying you don't have very long. Quick run in, grab a petition and get it done this weekend. We, we really need somebody else up here, you know, to help us out, so. Um, other than that, I enjoy everybody, love it. Things are getting a little easier for each meeting. Um, you know, come, come, it seems like we don't have anybody um, in the audience, um, unless there's a problem, but um, still come up and, and um, I do see on um, some of these Cedar Informed and um, whatever websites, I do keep my eye on it to try and figure out what people are complaining about. Um, it'd be a little more informational and you'd get a lot, lot more grease for your wheel if you came to a meeting and showed up here and asked your questions, um, because we can give an answer. We can't really give an answer when you're you know, on, on a, uh, social media. You, you know, come here, get your answers. That's the better place to be, because then you can hear everything that's going on in the meeting, so please come out, visit us, um, ask questions. Um, and thanks again to the staff. I love it. So with that, we are adjourned, 7:54.
How to go.
Hi, Barry.